Good evening, everyone. I would like to go ahead and welcome everybody to March 4th, 2024 City Council meeting. And before we get started with the full agenda here, I just want to note for those that are online that we are unable to stream. We're having some technical issues. We were having some technical issues last week, so we're trying to get to the bottom of this. It was working this morning. We don't know what's happening now. People can still join the meeting. They can do so by accessing the City Council Agenda by visiting Missoula City Council online. Scroll down to the calendar. You select March 4th, click on City Council. It opens up the agenda, and in that is a live, or is it a meeting link to join the Teams meeting? So there's also a telephone number if you would like to call in instead. Okay. So we'll get to the bottom of this, but this evening, we are not able to livestream. Okay. If you will go ahead and please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Before we get started, I want to go ahead and remind folks that tonight is the first night under the new council rule related to council agenda. The council has updated the format of the agenda to better address the business of the council in a timely manner. Council business items, such as public hearings, new business, consent agenda, and regular business, will enable the city staff who are necessarily attending to more efficiently use their time, as well as consultants and others who must attend city council meetings for certain noticed business matters. I anticipate this being a savings to taxpayers. Public comment will be taken throughout the meeting, and it has been consolidated for consent agenda and regular business. I look forward to seeing how this format works, and let's be sure to revisit this periodically based on how we see it working. I did just want to note that I did hear from one media outlet that we can expect more coverage from them because it will be more predictable when agenda items are covered. So I thought that was really good feedback. So I wanted to announce that first. The first item is a call to order and roll call. And Claire, I'm looking around both the horseshoe here and seeing who is online, and we have a full attendance this evening with councilors Vasika and Councilors Becerra online.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, which is approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes listed for this evening. Item number three is announce changes to committee agendas and committee membership approvals. Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes or announcements for our committee schedule for March 6th?
No changes from what was posted on Friday.
Okay, great. And as a reminder, we've covered this at several committee meetings, as well as council meetings, but we will no longer be announcing the committee's schedule into the, on record. It is available, of course, on the City Council website, but we're just looking at saving a little bit of time in our agenda by not having to read that on the podium this evening. So next, we'll move to special presentations and proclamations. And also, this is an opportunity at this point just to give a little precursor of what we can expect for our City Council meeting tonight. And I did want to call special attention to a couple of items on the agenda this evening. One is the council will consider implementing the documents of the Scott Street Workforce Housing Project. This vote creates the largest income-restricted homeownership project in state history. That is years in the making. Our team will provide a follow-up presentation on the project ahead of the full council vote this evening. And then, secondly, the Public Safety, Health, and Operations Committee voted unanimously to place a referendum on the ballot to support our fire department. Chief Hughes is here to provide a follow-up presentation on the committee presentation ahead of the full council vote. All right. So, under Agenda Item Number Four, and then I should just also make a quick note here, and thanks to all bearing with us for a new council agenda format, and also just some procedural reminders of how we conduct ourselves in council chambers. If folks wish to hand City Council members or the mayor any documents, we ask that you hand those to the officer in the back of the room. That way, we don't have any folks approaching this area, and it keeps the job of the officer a little bit easier there. When folks approach the podium, when it is time for public comment or comments on both items that are scheduled on the agenda or items not on the agenda, we ask that you identify your name and spell your last name for the record. And then, if you are, if you know your neighborhood and can represent which neighborhood or ward you're in, that's really helpful. And also, if you are representing an organization, to please let us know who that is as well. Our public comments will still be around. We'll keep it around three minutes for public comment, comments, and I will make sure I remind folks when that opportunity is at each agenda item. So we do not have any Neighborhood Council updates this evening, but we do have some proclamations. And the first is March for Meals Month. Let me get to that really quick here. March is kind of a busy month when it comes to different items. All right. So whereas the Meals on Wheels program at Missoula Aging Services is a valuable resource to older adults in Missoula County, and in the past year in Missoula County, more than 120 Meals on Wheels volunteer drivers delivered 125,462 meals to 772 homebound individuals. Community lunch sites served 34,920 meals to 793 clients. And volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of this program through their dedication to not only deliver hot nutritious meals to clients, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And Missoula Aging Services counts on these volunteers to support and the support of the community to serve the growing number of older residents who need this service to remain in their homes. And whereas, we wish to raise awareness and support for Meals on Wheels in Missoula and surrounding areas. Now therefore, we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor of the City of Missoula, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as March for Meals Month in Missoula, Montana, and invite citizens to thank the caring volunteer drivers, recognize the value of this service to homebound elders and adults with disabilities, and encourage citizens to volunteer as Meals on Wheels drivers so elders may remain in their homes. Okay. I have one more to read into record, and that is a proclamation, again by Missoula County and the City of Missoula. Bear with me, this one's a little longer. Whereas the women, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in the United States by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women continue to complete the majority of uncompensated domestic work. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the labor, volunteer labor force of the United States. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in the United States. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served as country, our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement and emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, all of which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, a Montana woman, Jeanette Rankin, was the first woman elected to the United States House of Representatives. And whereas, Missoula County became the first in the United States to vote for an all-female commission in 1985, when Barbara Evans, Mary Ann DaSoe, and Jeanette Stevens served on the board. And whereas, despite these many contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked, undervalued, and omitted in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners and Andrea Davis, Mayor of City of Missoula, do hereby recognize the month of March 2024 as Women's History Month, and invite all citizens to observe this month and celebrate International Women's Day on March 8th, 2024, with programs, ceremonies, and activities. And to visit www.women'shistorymonth.gov and women's history, montanawomen'shistory.org to learn more about this vital contribution of women in our country and state's history. Okay. Stay tuned for a women's contribution to public office at a later date. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate that. That wraps up our proclamations under Item Number Four, and so that moves us on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is public hearings. State law and City Council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the City Council and the mayor invite community comment. City Council holds a public hearing, and then will vote this evening unless there is requirement to delay that to the next meeting. So Item 5.1 is Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Second Quarter Amendments, and Lee Griffin is online and ready to present. Lee, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I will pull up my screen. Today, I am bringing forward a resolution for the second quarter fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. And state law allows us to amend the budget throughout the year as long as we hold this public hearing and have appropriate notice. And on that note, I wanted to let council and folks know that while council was sort of going through the process to change the order and rules around these council committee meetings, we did notice this meeting for happening, or this agenda item, excuse me, for happening both tonight as well as next Monday, even though going forward, we are no longer doing that second public hearing. But we'll push forward here. These budget amendments were presented to the City Council Budget and Finance Committee meeting last month on February 7th. And this resolution increases total city revenues by $40,611,559 and budgeted appropriations by $41,714 and $709. And I will pull up the detail of those numbers because they seem really large, but we'll see why. So as we go through these budget amendments and this chart that we have here, so folks understand what's happening, one thing that's important to note is that per state law, we always have to state what is going to pay for these increase in expenditures. So we have two columns here, the revenue account and description and amount column, and that's where you're going to see what is paying for this increase in expenditures. If you see text that says fund balance, it means that whatever fund is paying for these expenditures has sufficient existing fund balance to pay for these expenditures. So we have a reimbursement error in CPDI. We had some budget cleanup for fire. We had a new request in two places. The police received a HIDA grant after budget adoption. Parks is receiving additional cash-in-lu money for the Bellevue Master Plan. CPDI is receiving a grant for houseless programs built for zero-capacity building. And some of the larger dollar amounts are happening in our utilities. We have a lot of projects that were reviewed by council and considered during the budget process, but were not funded at that time because the funding wasn't in place or in process. These projects for both the wastewater and the water fund are being funded either through fund balance or through an application to the state revolving fund loaned program, which we use for a lot of these large utility projects. These are listed individually here. And then, some of the largest dollar amount here is the Downtown Sam Ray's Grant Fund, which has been presented to City Council and the public in the past, but we just have not gone through the administrative process to get it attached in the budget. I also want folks to note that by putting this in the budget now, we're also allowing public works to start hiring some staff to help with this work. Two additional items that we add to these budget amendments for informational purposes are budget carryforwards. These are items that were in process during the last fiscal year, didn't get completed. Sometimes, they're a little bit trailing, and we get them put forward here. And then, we also have budget transfers, and these are really just a matter of accounting. Something gets moved from one particular account to another account. This does not increase or decrease the budgeted revenues or expenditures for the year, but we want everybody to know what's happening in all of those counts at all times. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Griffin. I appreciate that. I did want to note, since we're sort of in this in-between time of changing the agenda, we do not have a final consideration anymore. We did actually post this agenda item on our agenda tonight for the second and final reading on March 11th, 2024. So pardon me, I misspoke saying that we would take a vote tonight, and that we'll go ahead and we're going to just keep it on, public hearings again next week, but with a no updates staff report. So we're in this transition time of had a few items that were in the queue prior to this agenda change. So just want to clarify that? Any, great. Okay. So, thank you very much, Lee. Want to check in, see if there are any questions from the council on that budget amendment? Not seeing any in the room. Are there any online? Okay. Not seeing any then. Ms. Trimble, I do believe, though, that we will go ahead and make a motion tonight, correct?
I'm not sure.
I'm going to go ahead and give the preference to President Cheryl. I think we could go ahead and make a resolution this evening.
I think we can go ahead and make a motion, and I'll be happy to do that.
Great.
If you'd like me to.
Please.
This is Budget and Finance. I move that we adopt a resolution for the second quarter fiscal year 2024 amendments to the annual appropriations.
Great. All right. We've heard a presentation, there is a motion on the floor, and now it is time for public comment on this agenda item. Is there anybody in the room for public comment this evening on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Is there any online?
Not that I see.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Okay. No public comment, then we'll go ahead and send it back to council comments. Are there any council comments on this agenda item? No? Okay, none online? Okay, then we can go ahead and take a vote on this item. One of the other agenda items that I think in particular on an issue like this, where there is not a lot of questions, there are not a lot of debate, is that we'll go ahead and do a voice vote rather than roll call. So we'll go ahead and do a voice vote. So, Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead and take it away, please?
We're going to vote on this on the 11th.
Oh, God, sorry. That's right. My apologies, everybody. Getting used to this nor format. Kidding, just teasing. You're ready to do it? You're like a first voice vote in a while. Okay, Ms. Trimble, just making sure you were keeping me online there. Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Then that takes care of that agenda item for the evening, and Ms. Griffin, thank you so much for your presentation. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Can't expect it to be too smooth. All right, this brings us to Agenda Item Number Six, which is new business. And this evening, we do have a new business item, and this is a City Council Resolution supporting United States Postal Service, USPS mail processing in Missoula. We have three, four City Council members that are introducing this item, and so I am going to, it's Gwen Jones, it's Mike Nugent, Kristen Jordan, and Eric Melson. I'm sure each of you would like to speak to this. Does anybody want to present this item? Ms. Jones, Councilor Jones?
I, thank you. I will just provide a few words on it, and I'm sure other folks will chime in and fill in the blanks, but I think several weeks ago, there was news item that the federal government was looking at relocating the distribution, the processing and distribution center for the post office, which has been centered in Missoula for Western Montana, and they were looking at relocating it to Spokane. So this story has been out there for the last few weeks, and then last Monday, we had quite a few very articulate postal workers who work here in Missoula come in and talk about the downside to that, the opportunity cost, and the impact it will have on Missoula and Western Montana, and asked us to support that. So there is a public meeting set for March 15th at 6:00 at the Doubletree, is my understanding, on this topic, and in advance of that, a lot of city councilors thought it would be wise to bring a resolution in support of keeping the distribution and processing, sorry, the processing and distribution center here in Missoula. And it not only keeps jobs here in Missoula, but it really has a huge impact on how quickly mail will be delivered, and there are some very vulnerable populations that rely on efficient mail delivery for receipt of and payment of bills, for medication, all sorts of important things. It impacts businesses that use the mail for their business. It really makes a huge difference for folks also who are not online, but who rely on our mail system. So numerous of us drafted this up, and I think it's widely supported. I will, I will leave it to others to add other information on this.
Okay. Councilor Jones, thank you very much. We have a few other sponsors of this. Anybody wish to speak to that? Councilor Melson, please.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to take a moment again to thank all of the dedicated members of all the postal workers who spoke to bring this to our attention last week. It's obvious to me, given our geology, that relocating the Processing Distribution Center to Spokane over two mountain passes would cause delays and complications to our mail service. So to me, this is not only the right thing to do for efficiency and reliability, but it's also the right thing to do to support our dedicated postal workers here in Missoula. So I'm happy to support this. Hope it makes an impact on the decision to keep the processing facility here in town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Melson. I'm just going to go right around here and see if Councilor Jordan would like to speak to this as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just really grateful that we're getting behind this for the reasons that my colleagues have already referenced today. When we do things like this, we add weight to all the other voices that are in favor of keeping the Processing Center here in town, and I am really happy to stand behind this, and I think it's going to make a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan. All right. And Councilor Nugent?
I won't repeat anything any of my colleagues have said. I'm just happy to stand with the workers of the United States Postal Service.
All right, great. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. So now, we open it up for questions from council. Are there any council members that have questions this evening? Okay, not seeing any, and not seeing any online. Then we'll go ahead and make a motion. Okay? Councilor Nugent, please.
I move the City Council adopt a resolution of the City Council supporting mail processing in Missoula and opposing plans to move processing out of Montana.
Okay, thank you very much. Folks, a motion has been made, so that opens it up to public comment. Is there any public comment from folks in the room that wish to speak to this item tonight? Come on up. Oh, wait. Mics up. Make sure you go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Big K, Low Life, Montana, Spitzmacher, S.P.I.T.Z.M.A.C.H.E.R. I've heard of this on the news several weeks ago. How many businesses that are equitably regarding to the post office is being trumpeted on the bandwagon? And I would say these substantial businesses would have some considerable clout with the big boys in Washington to help you guys on their endeavorment. Let's contact some reputable, high-quality businesses that rely on the post office here in Missoula.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Are there others in the room that wish to make public comment? Come on up.
This is comments on anything, right?
No, this is comments on this agenda item, which is specifically on this resolution.
Highly in favor of it. It's really great to see that Missoula can agree.
Sir, I know, we know who you are, but please identify yourself for the record.
Jeffery Oswald, 1905 Mount, Ward 4.
Thank you.
And I'm really, I'm glad to see when people agree on something that benefits everybody. And I really hope we're successful in keeping this from happening because it's a bad thing. And when you see something that's a bad thing, you should call it a bad thing and not participate in it. So I'm glad that everybody's on board with not participating in this really bad idea that would cost jobs around here and probably just put a lot more poison in the air because of all the extra transportation that would be in time. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Are there others that wish to speak tonight in the room? Okay, not seeing any. How about online? Anybody wish to speak to this agenda item online? Not seeing any? Okay. That will conclude public comment then on this resolution. So is there any additional City Council comment before we take a vote? Yes, please, President Cheryl.
I just want to thank my colleagues for getting on this quickly and responding to public comment, and I'm in support of it.
Great, yes. Councilor Anderson?
Yes, I just, I want to thank the folks who came down last week and for their comments and for their hard work, and, you know, I think the city has demonstrated that we are a proud union city. We have, I think, 13 collective bargaining units, so it makes sense that we will continue to stand up for good-paying, middle-class union jobs, and the postal workers are definitely a part of that and provide a really essential, it's called the postal service for a reason. And I think that, you know, those in charge need to look at it that way and less at the bottom line. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? All right. Don't see any online. So let's try this voice vote, shall we? All right. So I think I hand it over to you, Ms. Trimble, for this moment.
On the resolution of City Council to support mail processing in Missoula, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. Great. All right, and I also just want to add my comments. Thank you very much for bringing that forward and in support of our local United States Postal Service, service and employees here. All right, so now we're moving on to Item Number Seven. And so Item Number Seven are public comments for items on the agenda. So these are, this is inclusive of the consent agenda as well as regular business. So consent agenda, items on the consent agenda were approved in City Council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at City Council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what's on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items as well as regular committee items before, well, before we vote. So, Ms. Trimble, go ahead and read the consent agenda for us, if you would.
All right. Give me a second, let me sure my screen. And on the consent agenda this evening, we will be approving accounts payable claims for checks dated March 5th, 2024, in the amount of $1,203,464.32. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with MSI Information Management Solutions for scanning of microfiche inventory in the Candy Planning Development and Innovation Department for an amount not to exceed $87,593.55. We have a motion to award the bid for the Monroe Jackson Water Main Replacement Project, Prospect Construction, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $872,857, and to authorize the return of bid bonds. We have a motion to award the bid for the Edith Street Water Main Replacement Project to RLC Enterprises at a cost not to exceed $831,435.53, and to authorize the return of bid bonds. We have a motion to award the procurement bid to Northwest Pipe Fitters for the RAS valves for the wastewater treatment plant at a cost not to exceed $186,992. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the city MDT Stevens Orange Construction and Maintenance Agreement. and Maintenance Agreement. We have a motion to approve the funding, construction, maintenance, and local agency guidelines agreements for the renovation of the Milwaukee Trail at Bear Tracks Bridge in the amount of $413,798. The renovation of the South Hills Trail in the amount of $198,034. Repair cyclical, repair and cyclical replace or maintenance of the Kiwanis Park Trails in the amount of $109,003, sorry. And crack repairs to the Bitterroot and Milwaukee Trail in the amount of $102,443. And repair of Silver Park's Riverfront Trail in the amount of $55,553 and to authorize the mayor to sign all of the above. We have a motion to approve the purchase of one Febtech, Febtech ProScreen from the Modern Machinery of Missoula, Montana for the purchase price of $182,856. And finally, a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana, submitting to the qualified electors of the city, an election on June 4th, 2024 with the question of conducting a local government review of the City of Missoula and if approved, establishing a study commission consisting of seven members and levying $200,000 for study expenses.
Okay, Ms. Trimble, thank you. For the record, I'm getting used to this new agenda, presiding over this new agenda format, and this is the area where public comment for both consent agenda and regular business are one. And I did not make an announcement or invite the public to comment before the consent agenda, so I'm gonna go ahead and do a presiding officer prerogative tonight and I'll invite the comment to, the public to comment on the consent agenda. Before I ask, are there any council members to, to, wishes to separate any consent agenda items this evening for vote? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Any online, any separations of items? Okay, great. Not seeing any then. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda this evening? Okay, none in the room? Is there any online? Okay, I'm not seeing any there. Then we will go ahead and take a roll, or excuse me, we'll take a voice vote then on the consent agenda, Ms. Trimble.
All right, voting on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. Thanks, everyone. That is item number eight, consent agenda. So now we move on to regular business. So regular business, this evening, we have a couple of items underneath this. And like I said, normally we would take public comment in advance of this regular business, but we'll go ahead and do that after just because we are getting used to our new format this evening. So our first agenda item of business this evening is 9.1(c), which is the Committee of the Whole Committee Report. And this, excuse me, is 9.1(c)(B), Approval of the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion, often referred to as Jedi Advisory Board Appointments. And this was at Committee of the Whole last week and it was requested by Counselor Campbell that we have the opportunity to put this on the committee report, so he had an opportunity to speak to that. And looking at my order of business here, I believe that we will move forward with the recommended motion. Look around first and see if there's any council questions on this item first before hearing a motion. Okay, not hearing any. And any online? Okay. So Committee of the Whole, so that would be you, President Cheryl. Would you go ahead and provide the recommended motion there?
That is Committee of the Whole, okay. I recommend that we approve the recommendations of the selection committee and name Destiny Divine James, Jay Rains and Lily Sussman as Jedi Advisory Board members and Kaomi Looney as a board alternate.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor and we will go ahead and then take a, well, we'll go ahead and ask for council comments first before taking a vote. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my concerns with this recommendation is twofold. First, from a fiscal standpoint and then secondly, from a practical standpoint. So I'll address the fiscal standpoint first. You know, I've stood up at the podium here a number of times over the past couple of years, basically lamenting the fact that I don't believe that the product that we have, and I do call it a product of Jedi, is working well for the citizens of Missoula. I think if you look at this point, in this past fiscal year, we've allocated in excess of $140,000 for this program. I think in totality, we've allocated north of half a million dollars for this program. And I think where we're gaining in return for that, particularly, you know, I haven't worked for the city, haven't gone through the training myself back in 2021 and 2022, I don't think it's working well. I, I think we look to our strategic plan that has, it has conversation in there and has statements insofar as supporting equity, supporting diversity, supporting inclusion. I think those are important, but, you know, those are in place, are part of our strategic plan. And I think going forward, you know, it's up to the departments within the city to look at that strategic plan and carry that plan forward. There's goals and objectives within the plan. The strategic plan was put together by a wide coalition of folks and stakeholders from within the community here over a period of many, many months and it's adopted, it's there, it should be carried forward. But I don't think the half million dollars that we spent at this point has worked well for the city. I think, you know, we have other priorities that we need to concentrate on. I think this is, I've said before, this is definitely one of those wants, is one of those boxes that we want to check mark, we want to feel good about. But I think the reality of situation is it, it's not doing what we had hoped for it to do. I think it's product and, you know, I'm sure there'll be some in the committee that would say, maybe we spent $5 million on this, maybe you feel a little bit better, but I, I think be as it may, I think at this point, you know, we have to look at, you know, where we are with the program at this point, which segues to concern number two that I have, which is the practical. And very soon, we're gonna have discussions about fiscal year 25, fiscal year 25 budget. You know, we're looking at a large shortfall because of loss of ARPA money. And, you know, depending on who you talk to, you know, we're talking in the neighborhood of around $4 million of budget shortfall coming up for this fiscal year. And we're gonna have to have some really tough, tough conversations about what are our priorities or, you know, we're having a presentation tonight about, you know, important emergency services issues. You know, infrastructure is always first and foremost that I think the public at large expects us to, you know, provide those basic services, but, you know, come May, June, wherever we get into fiscal year 25, we're gonna have really tough conversations. I think the Jedi program's gonna have to be in that mix. I, I don't think we're gonna have the luxury of, you know, looking at that budget, look at the shortfall and, you know, raising question marks on pieces of paper as far as how we're gonna resolve an issue with our budget. And I, I think, you know, in terms of the candidates that are here before us in this recommendation, you know, I, I applaud, you know, I don't know if they're here in the room or not, but, you know, I applaud that they want to perform a public service and do a committee service. And I'm always supportive of that, but I, I think it's, it would be, you know, unfair not to at least mention that, you know, there's gonna be this tough conversation coming up for them and I, I don't think we want to set those folks up in a situation where, you know, we're appointing them to this board and I realize the money's there now, but appoint them to this board and then, you know, have conversations just a matter of months from now about the future of the Jedi program as a whole. And that's a conversation that, you know, will come in due time and, you know, for those reasons for tonight, I'm going to be against this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. There's quite a few council comments and I'll go ahead and order here. So Counselor Jones?
Thank you. So I appreciate the comments. Counselor Campbell, I, I disagree strongly. I think this is a program that has a lot of value. The summer of 2020 was an important cultural event across America as well as here in Missoula and there was a very strong message that we needed to do better. It is not a clear path forward. It is, it is not a linear process to do better, but I think it is, it's a challenge of trying to figure out the right tools to learn more about our community and who's in our community and how best we can serve all in our community. And I, to me, our Jedi initiative is one step forward to try and start having that conversation here in our community. And I appreciate the folks who have put their applications in and interviewed to be on this board. I think they're gonna bring a lot of value and I think we're gonna learn a lot and we're gonna try and figure out how we do things better. And to me, this is a decades-long process ahead of us. This is many, many years in, that it will take to hopefully create a better Missoula, but I think it's incumbent on us and it's our responsibility to take that step forward. And as you all know, I can talk about the budget till I'm blue in the face. This is a drop in the bucket of our budget. There are some huge structural issues in Montana law and in how local government is funded and every community across Montana is feeling it, every school district is, every county. So that's a much bigger conversation than the impact that Jedi has on our budget. So I'm very much in favor of it and I appreciate folks who are stepping up to serve on this and I look forward to learning and figuring out how to do stuff better.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jones. And next up is Counselor Carlino.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak in favor of appointing these people to the Jedi Board. All their applications seemed, seemed really great and they, I think they've got a lot to bring to the board. I think, you know, at the end of the day, there's, this is gonna be a long process of spinning the wheels and talking to each other and trying to figure out what, how we can become more just and equitable and diverse and inclusive in, in Missoula. And the truth is, a lot of our policies are far from that right now and it's gonna take a lot of talking to each other and spinning the wheels and bringing in new voices like this advisory board does. So I'm in favor of it. The advisory board itself is a pretty low cost and I definitely don't expect it to fix all the inequities at the city. I think there's a lot more that we need to do as a council and city to, to take on those things, but having some more advice and people from the community who have lived experiences coming in and advising us, I think is a positive step, step.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino. Okay, next is Counselor Becerra.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that there are a couple of things that I would like to make sure are clear in everyone's mind. First and foremost, to say that this is not working well is just simply not addressing the fact that that's what we're creating right now. So, you know, we, a couple of years ago, started on this journey of making our community more just, fair, diverse, and equitable. We set up the structure for the Jedi Committee Advisory Board and that's precisely what we're doing now is filling the positions that we, as, as a council and the county commissioners decided was the step that we needed to take forward in order to meet our goals for, for becoming a more Jedi community. So saying that it's not working, we haven't given it a chance to actually work. Second, this is not just a box that we check to feel good. I take issue with that because I sat on more than 15 interviews with fellow Missoulians who share with us the, the difficult situations they have been in, the struggles that they continue to have. When you hear that a fellow Missoulian standing in the cleaning supply aisle is told to buy something to rub off the brown on their skin here in Missoula, Montana, I would say that we have a problem and that it is our job to continue to find ways to be a more inclusive and more, more diverse and accepting community. When I hear people from a, a place of privilege to say that we don't have a problem to solve, it only reaffirms to me that we have a problem to solve. So I just wanna thank once again our staff for taking the time to go through a number of applications. We got a lot of interest and that to me also says that in the community, there's a need, need and appetite to serve as an advisory board to council and to the commissioners. This is not just city council. And also to all the members of the community who gave us some of their time and allowed us to learn what kind of struggles they face that we can work on. So this is not something that's gonna be fixed in one year, two years. This, this is an issue that is centuries long and therefore I think this is one, one step that we're taking to make our community better. Again, this is not taken from one place or from someone to give it to someone else. It's how to better distribute the limited resources that we have. And I am grateful for the service, the volunteer service of these fellow Missoulians to participate in this, in this board and thank you to the staff for all their time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Becerra. Counselor Vaseka.
Thanks. I just wanted to say that I agree with pretty much everything that my colleague, Mr. Campbell, said. I have been very vocal with my hesitation and frustration with the Jedi program in general, especially with the, with the lack of the measurable metrics within the Jedi program. We are in an inflationary crisis. We are in an exponential property tax crisis. Yes, this is a, just a drop in the bucket finance-wise, but what fills a bucket is many drops in the bucket. So personally, I will only entertain this and other programs once our fundamental programs are properly funded, so I will not be in support of this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Vaseka. All right. Not seeing any other councillor comments this evening. And again, we are following a new agenda format, but we are going to, I'm gonna go ahead and take public comment on all items that we are, that we are taking a vote on this evening. And so let's see, we have a motion on the floor. We have heard councillor comments and I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment this evening on this agenda item. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to make public comment? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Is there any online? Okay. Not seeing any online, then we will go ahead and, Ms. Trimble, can we do a roll call vote on this, please? Actually, we can do a voice vote. I think we know everybody wants to vote. So we'll go ahead and do a voice vote on this as well. So Ms. Trimble, go ahead and take that away.
All right, on the approval of the Jedi Advisory Board Appointments, all in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And that was Campbell and Vaseka?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, that item passes. Thank you, thank you very much, everybody. Then we move on to item 9.1d, under the Housing, Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee Report. And so this evening, last Wednesday, the council did hear a presentation from staff and the development partner on the Resolution of Intention to Bond for the Scott Street Rivara Project as well as the Scott Street Workforce Housing Project Agreements. And we have several staff as well as developers in the room tonight that are here and available if we would like additional information. So I'm gonna look to Chair Jones for the kickoff to this agenda item. How about that?
Do you want me to start with the motions and we get that on the floor?
Yeah, let's do that.
And there's two sections of motions. Would you like me to just read through all of the motions?
That would be great. If you'll take a pause between the two just to note what the difference is.
Will do. Okay, it's gonna take a while here, guys. All right, first, I will make the recommended motion to approve a resolution approving the Rivara Project and infrastructure improvements as urban renewal projects for the North Reserve Scott Street Urban Renewal District, make findings with respect thereto, and declaring the intention of the city to use tax increment revenues or tax increment revenue bonds to pay, reimburse, or finance. or finance eligible costs thereof. So that is item 9.1.D.B. as in boy. Then there are numerous items under section 9.1.D.C. as in cat. So I will go to those. And there are five motions. So first motion is I recommend that we approve a resolution authorizing the donation of a portion of the Scott Street parcel and authorizing the use of another adjacent portion of the Scott Street parcel as security for the construction financing for a public-private partnership to build a residential construction project incorporating workforce housing on the donated portion of the Scott Street parcel. Motion number two, I recommend that we approve the council, approve and direct the mayor to execute the development agreement relative to tract two, Scott Street lots, lot three, between the City and Revara Development LLC, presented here as Exhibit B to the donation agreement, memorializing the party's respective rights and obligations concerning tract two and for certain covenants and obligations to run with the land, including, among other things, an activity space easement for the use of a portion of tract three, Scott Street lots, lot three, by the residents of the tract two. Motion number three, I recommend that we affirm, that council affirm, that the amended and restated purchase and sale agreement for tract three, Scott Street lots, lot three, between the City and Scott Street Parcel LLC, for the purchase price of $1,648,118, together with the repurchase agreement conforms to council's intent and direction articulated in Resolution 8496. Motion number four, I recommend that council approve the utilization of the proceeds from the execution of that aforementioned purchase and sale agreement to fund a construction loan dedicated to the development of housing on the Community Land Trust parcel identified in Resolution 8496, notwithstanding Municipal Code 3.24.040 subsection C, directing revenue from the sale of city land and assets to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And finally, for the last motion, I recommend that council approve and direct the mayor to negotiate and execute a loan agreement between the City of Missoula and Revara Development LLC to fund construction of housing on tract two, Scott Streets lots, lot three, in approximately the form shown in the attached exhibit, together with any documents or agreements necessary with First Security Bank, to integrate administration of the city loan into the overall construction financing portion of the project, subordinate the loan, subordinate the loan as agreed between the city and First Security Bank, and affirm that final loan repayments upon completion of the project should be used to create additional income-qualified units or be directed to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And let me just double-check. Yes, so that's, those are all of the motions. I believe there were still questions because we ran short of committee time. And at the appropriate time, I would like to comment on this.
Okay, great. So Counselor Jones, I think what I'd like to do is offer the staff an opportunity to see if there's any additional information to present on these items. And so looking around the room, we've got folks both from the Missoula Redevelopment Agency as well as the City of Missoula on both the bond project as well as the workforce housing project. Is there any new information that you wish to present this evening?
Pardon me. John Adams, Strategic Projects Administrator for the city. If it's acceptable to the mayor, we'd like to just run through a quick recap of what we know and give our housing policy specialist and deputy director of MRA a chance to speak directly to their parts of the project.
That would be great.
As noted, my name is John Adams.
And don't be afraid to eat that microphone. Not quite, not literally, but you know.
Yeah. I'm the Strategic Projects Administrator for the City of Missoula, and I coordinated this project under the direction of Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer of the City, and Ellen Buchanan, Director of the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. You can see here that the outcome, outcomes of the project are going to be a high-quality addition to the northside neighborhood with better streets and community amenities and homes that regular folks can afford. These are some of the components that we'll see. MRA funding to support Streets, Water, Sewer, Sidewalk, a $3.25 million contribution to income-qualified workforce housing. We'll donate the workforce housing parcel to the North Missoula Community Development Corporation's Community Land Trust. We'll sell the market rate parcel coming out of the original Scott Street parcel in order to fund a loan, to support the construction loan that First Security Bank will provide to make the whole project go. And we'll collateralize the northwestern portion of the Scott Street parcel to secure that construction loan. And since we have been through this twice in recent times, I'm going to be pretty brief on this. So the northwestern portion of the property is tract two. This is where we will, this is what we will donate to the North Missoula Community Development Corporation. We also recommend council approve a development agreement with Revara Development LLC, functionally a nonprofit that works to, that will essentially construct the project for us. Pardon my technical difficulties. The development agreement governs how the whole project gets built. Collateral agreement governs that we'll put up as security, the northwestern portion of the original 20 acres that we purchased on the Scott Street parcel. And then the purchase and sale agreement that we recommend council approve will complete the sale of the market rate portion to Revara Development or their affiliate. So again, because we've done this twice recently, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but would like to ask Annie Gorsky, Deputy Director of the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, to speak directly to the workforce housing component and MRA's contributions without which the project wouldn't exist. And then Emily Harris Shears, the city's housing policy specialist, to give us some context for the importance of this project.
Great, thank you, Mr. Adams. Come on up, Ms. Gorsky. Give you a second to get set up.
Good evening, Annie Gorsky, Deputy Director with the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. So I'm going to highlight, so again, the action before you tonight related to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency is to approve the Revara Workforce Housing Project and Infrastructure Improvements as urban renewal projects as well as approving your intention to bond for the workforce housing and infrastructure improvements. We will come back to you in the spring with a bond resolution. That bond resolution will include the principal amount in terms of the bond. So this is not the first time that council and the MRA board have considered actions on this project. The first was, or most recently, was in May of last year of 2022, approving a reimbursement resolution to allow reimbursement of engineering and design costs for the infrastructure in the event of bonding for this project. And then in September of last year, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board approved a new workforce housing pilot program. We understand this is the first in the state using some new language in state law that was, that adds infrastructure to the definition, or workforce housing to the definition of infrastructure in the TIF section of the statute. So this allows us to create a new program to support and fund workforce housing in Missoula. This Revara project is the first use of this new program if council approves the bonding. And then in January of this year, last month, our board approved bonding for the project contingent or recommended that city council approve bonding for this project, specifically the workforce housing project and the infrastructure improvements. So you've seen this graphic before. What we're talking about tonight is approval of new streets and utilities in the right-of-way to support the development. This is a significant undertaking on a former industrial site here in North Missoula. This includes extending the north-south street connection, which is Shakespeare, to serve the development as well as a new, two east, new east-west connections, Charlo, which divides the development, the homeownership parcel to the north, and the market, planned market rate parcel to the south, as well as Palmer Street to the south, which will serve as both parking function for the development as well as a connection. This includes boulevard sidewalks on all of these streets, street trees, as well as pedestrian scale lighting. It also includes a new bus stop adjacent to the development on Scott Street as well as a cycle track which will run the length of the development and tie into future planned improvements on Scott Street to the south in the future. So again, tonight, you are not approving the funding, you're approving an intention, your intending, your intention to bond for this project. A breakdown for, that we are showing here before you is a not to exceed $9.8 million. That breakdown includes just more than $6.2 million for infrastructure improvements, which I just described, as well as $3.25 million for workforce housing construction gap. We know that this project would not include the number of income-restricted units that the planning currently includes without the tax increment financing investment in the vertical construction for the workforce housing. This project also includes, in addition to tax increment financing, we are leveraging several new programs, including two new programs offered through the Montana Board of Investments, which lower the cost of financing for this project. This project aligns with several goals in the city's strategic plan, namely returning nine acres of former state superfund site to productive use, to bringing new housing to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gorsky. I believe that we have Ms. Harris Shears next? Yep. And you are online. Great. Take it away.
Hello, I'm Emily Harris Shears. I work in housing policy for CPVI. And just trying to make sure, okay, can you see the PowerPoint?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Just wanted to, as John said, highlight some of the local need and why this project is meeting our needs and is so important to our current housing goals. We have a housing affordability need, as you all know. In 2023, the area median income for a family of four in the county is, was $86,400. And the median home sale price in 2023 was $525,000. That means that a household of four needs to earn between 200% and 240% of area median income, which is equivalent to $172,000 to $206,000 to afford a median-priced home. And then we also see that the largest gap in housing supply is for homes priced between 300 to $450,000, excuse me, which means that those homes would be available to earners between 90% and 130% AMI. We also know that in 2023, for the entire year, 35% of homes listed and for sale in Missoula were able to be attained by people earning less than 130% AMI. So we have an opportunity and a need to address some of the undersupply of homes that people below, really, 200% AMI can afford. And this project also aligns to our city goal through our strategic plan, meeting the community design and livability and economic health goals, and also the Missoula growth policy of focusing inward. And then, of course, meet several of our strategies outlined in A Place to Call Home, which is the city's adopted housing policy, which include opportunities for replic, excuse me, replication and elevating best practices in our local marketing context, utilizing land donation and land banking, expanding affordable homeownership options, testing this idea of a master-planned community, and supporting our community land trust partners, North Missoula Community Development Corporation, through land trust administrative support and expanding our, expanding and leveraging our funding sources that we're using for housing development. I know that there is a question about the estimation of price. I just want to name that the process for setting home prices locks in when the project is fully done. So the developers used a modeling that we put together as a group with North Missoula Community Development Corporation, Revara, and me. And the modeling suggests that for the pro forma, the project budget suggests that prices will range between $170,000 and $250,000 for studio and through two-bedroom homes. But I just want to caution that these are not the final numbers because likely the project will be done later next year and after. And so we'll use updated area median incomes as well as updated interest rates to finalize the price. But just to give you a ballpark of, you know, where we are below what people can afford currently that's on the market. And then, as John mentioned, with these 46 homes that are income-restricted, we're excited that, to our knowledge, this is the largest community land trust project in the state so far. And also that we estimate that 493 households will be served over the lifetime of the 75-year use restriction. And we're currently looking at a $95,000 per community land trust home subsidy, which is, we're often seeing subsidies of up to $150,000 for project homes. So this is a good investment. And we also see that condominium homes are about $245 per square foot and $210 per square foot for townhomes. And that's what I have. So I'll turn it back to John or Annie.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris Shears. Appreciate you being on tonight. Is there any other staff presentation? No? Okay, and looking around the room, we also have the development partners in the room. If there's anything that you'd wish to add to the presentation this evening? Come on up.
Hi, Kai Hochstetler, K.I.A.H.H.O.C.H.S.T.E.L.E.R. with Revara Development. And as we stated across this project, this is not possible without the support of the City of Missoula and the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. These projects are comprehensive, to say the least. As we work with providers, whether it be our general contractor or insurance companies, as we say, all of the parties involved with this, they say this is an amazing project. I got off the phone today with the insurance company for this, and they're just blown away at the scale and level at which we're doing this. And thank you for your support as we've gone through this. And this is a model that we can take into the future.
Great. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. And I know we, because this was a committee item in which we had unanimous support, but we did want to bring this back as a discussion item because it's such a substantial project and opportunity for us as a community. Now, we have heard staff presentations and developer presentation, so I'd like to open it up to questions from the council at this time. See if there's any questions this evening. Okay, and, Mr. Campbell, no? No questions, okay. All right, just looking around to see if we have any questions. I don't see any questions. And we already have motions on the floor. And because we are going to go ahead and, oh, Ms. Vaseka, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was waiting for the proper comment time, but since the motion was already on the floor, is now the proper comment time?
Well, we will, we're certainly, I'll ask you to hold your comment until we take public comment, if that's okay. Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. We're kind of feeling our way through this new agenda format. And because we're bridging from the old process to the new, we're leaning on more public comment than consolidation this evening on this particular section of this evening on this particular section of regular agenda items. So we'll go ahead and open it up then to public comment, and then I'll bring it back to council comments after. So is there any public comment on this agenda, on these motions tonight?
Jeffrey Oswald, Ward four. I was, I was listening to the statistics that she was putting out, and one thing kind of struck me, and maybe I got this thing backwards. I remember taking math a long time ago, and you had mean and median. Now, as I understand, mean is the average of a whole population. Median is the halfway point between the biggest and the smallest. So when you're presenting a mean as this average mean, or average median, it's, the average median is way above the average income level for the people who are living in the city, which means the vast majority of the people would not be, even if this is purportedly affordable living option, it seems that it's still one that favors the people who are sitting on top of the economic scale as opposed to people who are actually have limitations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any others in chambers tonight? Mr. Moore, come on up.
My name is Bob Moore, M-U-H-O-R-E. First thing I'd like to say that I don't really have had time to really study this project. What I have learned about it, I don't like anything about it. My recommendation is this be terminated, stopped, and totally set in the trash. Here's a couple of things from the minutes of the MRA. He said, which is, I guess, the equity component to kickstart of the other forms of finance and come into this project. The project without these $3.2 million, the project doesn't happen. One of the best things that could happen to this city is that this project not happen, absolutely not happen. Another sentence, there is a zero market rate incentive to this and deliver this type of project. Rivera is requesting a $250,000 reimbursement for timing expenses. Last time I learned anything about the TIF, you didn't pay anything in TIF until the project was completed. 100% completed, not, not even started. Now, I don't know this workforce too well, but I want to see the regulation or whatever it is, that says you should start paying 3.25 million upfront, plus $250,000. Who is entitled to $250,000 before anything's done? Y'all apparently have been talking about it for two years, I think. Totally opposed to paying $250,000 in any form of matter. There's a point in here that, give me one second. Well, I just, it was a point in here, this is the minutes of the MRA board for December 1st. I'll even print y'all one if y'all can't get to it. One statement was made, one statement is made that we cannot, you cannot make a profit on this project. Any project that starts, you can't make a profit on, shouldn't be started.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. Are there any other public comments in the room on this agenda item this evening? Come on up, make sure you identify yourself and spell your last name, please.
David Everingham, E.V.E.R.I.N.G.H.A.M., Ward one. I'd like to say thanks to Annie Gorsky. She always answers the phone when I call her at MRA and talks to me about these things. I'm not very fond of tax increment funding at all because we're just borrowing against our tax dollars that we're paying. But we were looking at a modular home this summer, 1,200 square feet for 110,000, set in place minus the foundation. Has anybody thought about that for these homes up here? I don't know how you can even begin to build a house for under 300 square foot, and that's 300,000 for 1,000 square feet. They come pre-built, they're pretty nice, they're just as efficient, and they're way less money. And they can come in a variety when you order a lot of them. It's way better than built in place and way cheaper. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Everingham. Are there others in the room that wish to speak to this agenda item this evening? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Is there any public comment online that wishes to speak to this item tonight? Not seeing any? Okay, now we'll go ahead and we'll move to council comments. Councilor Jones had requested to speak to this, and then Councilor Vasika, I know that you wanted to speak to this as well, and I've seen some other folks raising their hands, so we'll make sure we get to you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you. Thanks for all the information tonight and the, and having the developers speak to this. I'll keep my comments short. This is a big project, and I'm so glad that we've got this in front of us. We have seen the impact that Velagio and Trinity have had on our housing here in Missoula. I don't think we're ever going to solve housing, but we sure can try and make some inroads. And for the folks that get housed and get a reasonable apartment that they can rent, it makes a huge difference to them. This is another big project like that, and I'm so grateful it is in front of us. This focuses more, the portion of it that will be affordable, will focus more on homeownership, so it's a different category, but also very, very valuable. And I was, I think the number that Ms. Harris Shears shared with us that over 75 years, this will benefit 493 families, they're extrapolating that out, that is a huge impact on our community. I appreciate the work that has gone into this by some incredibly hardworking, intelligent people, and the fact that they wouldn't take no for an answer, and they kept at it until they got it in a time of rising inflation and rising interest rates and a lot of challenges that were thrown at them. So thank you, MRA, the city, the developers. Thank you to everyone, the banks. Thanks to everyone for keeping at it and not just ever walking away from this project, but making sure it went forward. Government is not terribly nimble, but it does move forward slowly and methodically. And over the last few years, the Missoula has pivoted our local government to really try to work on housing and significant impact housing, and I'm grateful that we're going in this direction. And I just also wanted to reference that, as Mr. Hochstetler said, this is a template. This is something that we can use in the future, which is an incredibly valuable tool. So thank you for all of the hard work that has gone into this, and I'm happy to vote yes on it, on all six motions. There's a lot of them there.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. I'm going to go in order of folks that have their hand raised, and so Councilor Carlino.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think this is an excellent use of TIF funds and city, city resources towards this project. You know, right now, we're in a housing crisis in Missoula, and putting our money towards building affordable homes, I think, is a, is a positive thing that we can do. And in our housing continuum, where we see that we need more access to shelters and market rate and affordable homes and campsites and all types of different housing that people need, this helps fill one of those gaps that we're lacking in right now. And I guess lastly, I just think that our need for housing as people should not be reliant on a system that's built to make profits for other people. This is a good example of us stepping up as a government and community and nonprofits to fill that gap and make sure that people can get access to housing even when they don't necessarily have the income and means to afford something that would normally look like this under our free market system. So I appreciate the City of Missoula and our partners on this, and I'm definitely, is a day that I'm proud to be a part of the City of Missoula and see us take steps towards making housing as a, as a human right in Missoula. So I'm happy to vote yes on this.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carlino. All right, next up is Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So going into this and watching this development unfold over the past few years, you know, I've had this concern about the scope and depth of the public expenditure here in terms of land purchase, in terms of use of TIF money in this project for both vertical construction and horizontal construction. Personally, I do believe there is a role from TIF from time to time to be used for the benefit of the public. I do have concerns, generally speaking, with the use of TIF money for vertical construction, particularly over time. You look at interest rates, you look at cost of building supplies, building materials, cost of labor, you know, it has an impact on that. I think it's hard to peg down the dollar amount at one point and then expect, you know, when it comes time to actually put a shovel in the ground, that it's going to be that particular cost. And that, that's been a concern of mine going into this. I did have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Adams and Mr. Bickel and discuss this further. And in this particular case, I, I am satisfied that there are enough safeguards in place to ensure that, you know, we talked about that gap, that $95,000, you know, per unit subsidy that's out there, that we're not going to get hit further down the line with an increase in that due to, you know, those rising costs. You know, my concern's always been, you have the area median income going up at a modest level, but recent trajectories with the cost of supplies, the cost of actually building has risen dramatically, particularly over the last few years. I'm worried about that gap. I'm worried about the taxpayer, you know, holding the bag on, you know, the increase in that, the expenditure. So I'm appreciative that there's safeguards in place, you know, to negate that if necessary, if we need to sell some of those land trust units to maintain that affordability level to keep that gap from going up. I, I think there's enough safeguards in place for that. So in this particular case, you know, certainly going forward, any new projects that come up, again, you know, my concern is, you know, to what degree city and public money is involved with purchasing land for private development. I'm concerned with, you know, the cost of building in terms of vertical development. One other thing I keep in mind, though, and just happened this morning with Missoula Organization Realtors' presentation on, you know, 2024 Housing Report, and the numbers aren't that great, they weren't anywhere near what I, my, my expectation was there'd be this kind of leveling off with, you know, housing costs and rental costs, and it's not trending anywhere like that. In fact, I think the median income now is north of 500 and, or median housing cost now, or housing price for a single family is north of 550,000 this year. So it's not in a good direction. There aren't many options available for affordable housing, and, you know, in this particular case, you know, I, I think, you know, we have an opportunity to address that in a responsible way to the extent that we can. So for this particular development, this particular set of resolutions, I'll be in support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Campbell. Councilor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. When I got on council two years ago, I remember Brian Van Losberg pulling me aside and saying, there's this thing I really want to tell you about. There's this unicorn piece of property, and this is what we want to do. And then soon after I got on council, there was a working group formed, and we, I remember hearing the presentation for the first time, and as one prominent city staffer who may or may not be sitting behind me tonight likes to say, there was about 1,000 different ways this could go wrong. And even with my two journalism degrees, I looked at the stack at first and was like, this, everything is going to have to fall perfectly into place. And then for two years, people worked diligently, and like Ms. Jones said, didn't take no for an answer. Interest rates rose, inflation rose, and still people kept going and kept working to make this a reality. I live not far from this project, and I'm just super grateful that we're here. I think what turns, what started as a unicorn piece of property is now turning into the largest development of workforce housing in the state, and the first time that we have been able to use tax increment financing for workforce housing. And I think it's something to celebrate in honor of the Academy Awards that are going to be Sunday. I do want to thank some people, and I will probably, like at the Oscars, forget a few people. But specifically, so city staffers, I wanted to thank John Adams, Dale Bickel, Annie Gorsky, Ellen Buchanan, Emily Harris Shears, Brian Sudbury, and our partners at the North Missoula Community Development Corporation, Brittany Palmer, Hannah Cosell, and Bob Oaks. I also wanted to thank our partners with Rivera, Kai Hochstetler, and Dawn McGee. And I'd also like to thank Brian, because I think Brian was on the ground floor of this as well. And the person I'd really like to thank the most is Heidi West. Heidi organized our entire neighborhood around this piece of property when the DEQ did not want to clean it up to residential standards and told us that it was just fine to leave it the way that it was. And she got all of our neighbors, our children, you know, around this issue, and we wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for Heidi's diligence and sort of her own crusade to make sure that this parcel was cleaned up to residential standards. If I know Heidi, she's at home canning something or repotting some plants, or maybe she's making a dress or three. But I really do hope that if you see her, you do thank her because this is in part because of her hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Savage. Appreciate that. All right, Councilor Vasika, you're up.
Thank you. Firstly, I wanted to let it be known that affordable and workforce housing means subsidized by your neighbor's property tax dollars. But secondly, I did want to give a shout out to Heather Harp, as she is the one who let me know her passion regarding the community land trust model and this project specifically. And she did spend her free time coming over and explaining it to me using my kiddo's toys to visualize the concept. So I just wanted to give a shout out to her regarding that. And then I also wanted to speculate that Councilor Heidi West would also be in support of this, especially given her presentation and her enthusiasm and passion regarding the North Side, just like Councilor Savage said. So that being said, I'm still greatly hesitant on this idea and would not be in support of this without those former counselors in my ear. Since they are no longer on council with us, and this will pass anyways, even though I agree with commenters that commented earlier, I am going against my better judgment, but for experimental processes, I guess Councilor Harp and West's passion and dedication outweigh my hesitation for the project. So I want to let it be known that my support for this is an accolade towards them, so I will be in support of this tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Vasika. All right, Councilor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I appreciate the comments from all of my colleagues. You know, someone, I think it was Bob, referenced the, the housing report today, and there were lots of great participants from many different organizations, kind of talking about the reality of the housing situation in Missoula. It's not great. And, you know, supply is an issue, and it's going to be an issue, and we need to do a lot to improve that. But if we, we're not, we're not going to catch up by just saying, let the market take care of it by itself. We have to do things that give the everyday workers and people here a chance to be part of this. You know, Councilwoman Vasika, you referenced affordable being subsidized by our neighbors, and I'll just say, you're damn right. Sometimes there are community problems that need community solutions, and I think this is a great use of public money to help create homeownership, but also create a whole lot of market rate product as well in an area of town that I think we have designated as ready for this type of growth and development. You know, I said at the committee meeting last week that this would not be happening without the city's help, and it would not. And it's been fun to be part of that working group and to see it all come together. I actually am going to miss the flow charts. I can't see John back there, but, and, you know, I am, I think Councilman Carlino said it, I am- it, I'm proud to be voting on this today, because I think this is actually an example of us as a community doing good, and I hope it is a model that's replicatable down the road.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Nugent, okay, Counselor Cheryl, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. I don't have a whole lot to add from my colleagues, but for this piece of property and for a town that is experiencing the housing pressure than that we're experiencing, this is a huge success. And it's a really big deal. I'm proud of it. I'm proud that we are, we are able to do that in this community, and I'm thankful, as I won't list everyone like Jennifer did, because I'll forget someone, I'm sure, as well, but, you know, just the tenacity that it took for us to get here is a big deal, and I'm thankful that we have people that keep their eye on the prize and have that tenacity in them. So happy to vote for it.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful comments in regards to this large project. And with that, then, I believe that we are ready to take votes. We have a lot of motions on the floor. And Ms. Trimble, I do think it would be best that we do roll call votes. And we have several separate resolutions. Counselor Jones, I believe, because some of these require a supermajority, some of them do not. And so two things require a supermajority here, and that is the donation agreement with Rivera and North Missoula Community Development Corporation, and the other is the purchase and sale agreement with Scott Street Parcel. Would you prefer to take each of these with a roll call, or do each of those separately and the others together?
I think you should do the MRA resolution separately, and then do the two that call for a supermajority separately, and then the rest can be just one lump sum, for clarity's sake.
Great. So on, and I'm looking to our city attorney, Mr. Sudbury, who's in the room, and making sure that I am doing this appropriately. We have one Missoula Redevelopment Agency Resolution, which is the resolution of intention for bonding. And so we'll go ahead and take that separately. We'll do the two supermajorities together, and then we'll do the rest of the resolutions. Yeah? Nod. Awesome. Okay. So the first vote, Ms. Trimble, will be the...
Is the resolution.
Correct. Resolution of intention.
Voting on the resolution of intention to bond for the Scott Street Rivera project, starting with Anderson.
Yes.
Basara.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika? Yes. And that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Trimble. We're going to take the next tranche of votes here, and these are for the items that require a supermajority of votes, which is seven of the 12 city council members. Those two items are donation agreement with Rivera and North Missoula Community Development Corporation, and then the second is the purchase and sale agreement with Scott Street Parcel A motion, motions have been made, so Ms. Trimble, I think when you're ready, you can go ahead and do a roll call vote on those.
Just one second.
And thanks, everybody. This is a complicated agenda item.
It's number one and number three, correct? It's, first one listed is the donation, and the third one is the market rate purchase.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, taking number one and number three together, beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Those pass unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Trimble. And for the record, however, that was, those items that we needed a supermajority were item number one and four. Sorry, I didn't confirm that, because the...
Number four.
One and four, which is the purchase and sale agreement with Scott Street Parcel, not development agreement. I'm sorry, I confirmed the wrong one there. So do you want to go ahead and add that clarification for the record? Can we clarify that, looking around the room? Is everybody okay with that vote?
I think in a little bit of complexity, we should probably read out what we voted on.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. So Ms. Trimble, Mr. Sudbury recommended that we read out what we were voting on, just because of the complexity of the vote here. So if you would not mind, let's scratch that. Let's start over with that vote. We'll start over with the two supermajority items, which start out as 9.1 point DC. I'm going to help you here. That is the donation agreement with Rivera and NMCCDC.
And the second one is...
Hold on. I think we have them listed separately. A little pause of event, I think we have them listed separately, Mr. Sudbury, on our property disposition versus on the agenda here. One second, Ms. Trimble. So it was the first and third. What item are you on? Yeah? I have a current agenda here. Okay. Okay, great. Okay. Okay. Oh, my bad. We did pick that. Yep, yep. Yep. Okay. Okay. And then vote again.
Okay.
Ms. Trimble, my bad. The first and the third were correctly voted on. And we have a affirmative vote on that?
We do.
Okay. Check those off the list.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Sudbury did recommend that you read the remaining motions into the record before we take a roll call vote on those.
Okay. The motions, remaining motions that we will be voting on as a group are to approve, that council approve and direct the mayor to execute the development agreement relative to Track Two, Scott Street Lots Lot Three between the city and Rivera Development LLC. Represented here is Exhibit B to the donation agreement memorializing the parties' respective rights and obligations concerning Track Two and for certain covenants and obligations running with the land, including other things and activity space easement for the use of a portion of Track Three, Scott Street Lots Lot Three, by the residents of Track Two. We already voted on number three. We'll also be voting to approve, the council approve, the utilization of the proceeds from the execution of that aforementioned purchase and sale agreement to fund a construction loan dedicated to the development of housing on the community land trust parcel identified in Resolution 8496, notwithstanding municipal code 3.24.040C, directing revenue from the sale of city land and assets to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And finally, to approve that council approve and direct the mayor to negotiate and execute a loan agreement between the City of Missoula and Rivera Development LLC to fund construction of housing on Track Two, Scott Street Lots Lot Three, in approximately the form shown in the exhibit, together with any documents or agreements necessary for Security Bank to integrate administration of the city loan into all overall construction financing portion of the project, subordinate the loan as agreed between the city and Security Bank, and affirm the final loan repayments on completion of the project should be used to create additional income qualifying units or be directed to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Excellent. All right. We're ready.
Beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
And Basara?
Yes.
And that group also passes unanimously.
All right, excellent. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for bearing with me on that. Appreciate that. It was a very complicated set of motions, and congratulations. I want to echo my thoughts on the city's investment in time, the city staff, and those in the community that have stepped forward on really a monumental project for our community, as well as the state. There'll be other communities looking to us to implement this workforce housing policy, really the first in the state to have implemented such a new opportunity through the legislative session, and I'm very excited for that. So, thank you very much. Okay. Looking at the good of the order here, that concludes that agenda item. And now we're going to move to the Fire Department Levy Resolution. I did want to just take a check here. Does anybody need a break? Are we doing all right? You want to keep moving? It looks like we're okay. Okay, folks can take a break as they need. And so we do have several folks from the department here, including Chief Gordy Hughes. And so I'm going to look to Chair Anderson before we start, but because we did hear this already, it was unanimously supported in committee. And would you like to kick off anything before we hear from Chief Hughes?
Yeah, great. Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. As you said, we heard a lengthy presentation from the chief in our Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee meeting last week, but it was such a good presentation, we wanted to hear it again, because I think it really highlights the need for why it is that we're asking the community to support the levy that we are, if voted on this evening, will be put forth on the June 4th ballot. It talks about, you know, the additional strains on the overall, or strains on the overall system that we're experiencing, and how despite firefighters being no for can-do type, a get-or-done type folks, they are in need of some additional capacity within the entire system to really meet the level of service that a city of Missoula deserves. So with that, we're excited to hear more from Chief Hughes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You bet. My pleasure. Chief Hughes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Name is Gordy Hughes, the Fire Chief for the Missoula Fire Department. I've been told that I spoke quite lengthy last Wednesday, so I am going to shorten this presentation up a little bit and blaze through this, but if there are any questions for council, I entertain that at the end of the presentation. As your fire chief, it is my job, along with chief officers in my staff, to assess and determine the needs of the fire department relative to the performance of our mission. Our performance standards are not meeting the national standards as set by the National Fire Protection Association. These standards have been established as best practice benchmarks, as they are proven to save lives and affect more positive outcomes. Philip, if you'd share the screen?
Mr. Keating, we're going to get in a presentation up there.
As he's queuing that up, I will just outline the challenges that we are facing as a department in your community. First and foremost, everyone knows that Missoula is growing at a steep rate. Since 2008, the last time we opened a fire station in the Missoula Fire Department, or here in the city, our population has increased. Well, 2010, we had a population of 66,788 people. The last census, we had 76,955 residents in Missoula. It's a 15% increase since then. Our call volume has increased since the last station opened. We were running 5,850 calls for service that year. Our numbers for 2022, as you can see here, we're at 10,436 calls. It was an increase of 78% workload. We just received our numbers for this year after reconciling our reports. We ran 10,943 calls for service. That's 507 more calls from 2022, which adds an additional call and a half per day. We're running 30 calls a day on average, which doesn't seem like a lot of calls, but what that means is that our workload and the availability of our resources for the next emergency coming into the 911 center, we're missing our mark. The perfect scenario would be a fire engine within its response district available at the time of emergency. The NFPA uses a standard called station reliability, which I wanted to change that name, because it's not as relative as what it truly stands for, and it's the resource availability, whether or not that engine or apparatus that you may know the location of relative to your home, Station Three, down at the bottom of 39th and Hill of U.A. Everybody sees that when they're driving out southwest Higgins and 39th. Our headquarters station, which is just over the Madison Street Bridge, north of the university, Station Four on Latimer, out in the Costco area, North Reserve area, Station Five up in Linda Vista area. You may know where those locations are, but chances are, in today's response times, that unit may not be available for your emergency in a timely manner. We're lagging the national standards by over two minutes per call response. If you asked me to give that a grade, I would say we're at a D, which is not passing very well, in my opinion. Our slow response is relative to the calls for service, is also relative to many other features within the city. As I spoke to on Wednesday, with our geographical boundaries, it's difficult for us to get across the river in locations, and are only able to get north of the river at points that make it difficult to reach those six-minute response times that are recognized by the National Fire Association. So the time is now for a six-engine company. And where that station would be located will be dependent on a study that we are implementing to determine the best... We're lagging the national standards by over two minutes per call response. If you asked me to give that a grade, I would say we're at a D, which is not passing very well, in my opinion. Our slow response is relative to the calls for service, is also relative to many other features within the city. As I spoke to on Wednesday, with our geographical boundaries, it's difficult for us to get across the river in locations, and are only able to get north of the river at points that make it difficult to reach those six-minute response times that are recognized by the National Fire Association. So, the time is now for a six-engine company, and where that station would be located will be dependent on a study that we are implementing to determine the best response modeling and how we can facilitate the responses where most, the majority of the calls take place, and with speed to reach areas that our growing bustling community is exhibiting today. What impacts does it have right now for residents and the community that we're exhibiting? The human impacts, the civilian injuries, which could lead to deaths. In a cardiac arrest situation, seconds count. For structure fires, the quicker we get there and limit the damage of a structure fire, it's going to be much better in the results for rebuilding, or if people are trapped, to affect rescues in those scenarios as well. And then, first and foremost, in my mind, firefighters' injuries and deaths associated with calls to fires, more dangerous situations than medical aid calls perhaps on our personnel. The economic impacts, response times save property damage, they save lives, bottom line. We also have the potential of a decreased ISO rating within your insurance premiums would be impacted immensely if we continue to show our response times decreasing and that staffing not following the population growth here in the city. The impacts right now, people are seeing on the urban fringe, just from the loss of, from large fiery events around the country, some people here in Missoula are losing their coverage in those locations, up the drainages. It's only a matter of time where that may have impact closer to the heart of the city, where your insurance rates start to run away from the cost of perhaps providing additional help and support firefighters on the streets. Psychological impacts, you know, the loss of businesses through fires that aren't contained in a smaller degree or damage, losing people's livelihoods with their work locations. We feel that if we dial 911, we're going to get a response, an immediate response. This is not going to be the case with the lag of those response times that I mentioned, that, you know, two minutes is unacceptable. Functional impacts, lack of continuity of operations. Our battalion chiefs, I mentioned in the past, they're constantly shuffling our resources around as we're getting simultaneous calls for service occurring throughout the day. We're over 50% call collision, I'll call it. That's when we have the simultaneous calls occurring at the same time. We have to manage the resources to the degree of the severity of those calls, so triaging, much like the ERs do with patients. You know, it's that example, as well as that station reliability that I gave, that is impactful. Also, a loss of effectiveness in what we can do, once an emergency has occurred, it may have become, to a degree and a level, that we're in a defensive mode on a fire, because we can't go interior, not safe for our folks to enter. So, our effect of stopping fires and responding to medical emergencies, the effectiveness is, could decrease as well. So what the levy will hopefully cover, if successful, would be 20 additional firefighters. We would try to hire those folks as quickly as we can to get them on the streets. 20 firefighters, I know we're not like police officers, we can't take care of business one officer at a time responding to the emergencies PD responds to. We have to do it in groups of threes, three people at a minimum on an engine company responding in an emergency. So that's why we have this big ask of 20 firefighters. We have four shifts in the department, and we need that large component to facilitate another engine company with the makeup of our staffing. With that, I would open any questions.
Okay. Chief Hughes, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you Assistant Chief Keating for providing the slideshow and information. So, we have questions from council. Are there any questions from council this evening? Counselor Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate the presentation. I have some questions for you, so if you want to. So, when we, I think it was Wednesday, a couple Wednesdays ago or something, we talked a little bit about the ISO rating and how that affects homeowners' insurance. Would you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The insurance companies establish a benchmark for the fire premiums that people pay on their insurance, and it's relative to the ranking, and the ranking is a 1 through 10 ranking, 1 being the best that you can have provided protection by your fire department, the water supply that's necessary to fight fires, and the 911 service that dispatches our resources. 10 would be no protection at all. You'd be living up in some isolated location that does not have a fire department at your beck and call, but currently, Missoula's at a 3, level 3. We're pretty solid in a 3, but if we continue to see the downturn in our response times and the staffing numbers relative to respond to a structure fire with an effective firefighter fighting force, that number has a potential backsliding to a 4, which would increase your insurance premiums. We could move to a 2 with additional staffing and lesser response times.
Please, go ahead.
I have a, so, that's great. So, I mean, basically, you know, if we were to, I guess if it goes up, it's worse, right? Or ISO rating. Anyway, if we lose, if we get worse in our rating, our insurance, our home insurance prices, we could expect them to go up. If we get better in our rating, we might be able to expect them to go down. So I think that's kind of an important, when we're really just looking at the economics of this, I think that's an important thing to remember. The other thing you had said in talking about the response time and the two-minute response time, I mean, I had to call you guys for something a long time ago that happened with my child, and you were there really fast. I'm endlessly thankful for that, and two minutes would have been a really, really long time. But you also, you know, in a crisis, two minutes feels like five days, but you talked about the risk for firefighters going into a fire two minutes later, so I'd like you to expand on that a little bit, if you would.
Sure, and maybe for clarification, we are two minutes over the response time recognized by the NFPA. So, in a developing fire room and contents, the structure, the, there's a time-temperature curve, I won't bore you with the science and stuff, but a room gets heated to the point where all the combustibles within that compartment reach their ignition temperature in a certain period of time, and what happens is you've got, instead of a room and contents on fire, you have a room on fire, and if a firefighter were to enter that room to effect extinguishment at the right time, the firefighter had the potential of succumbing to ignition. Our protective equipment only protects to a certain level of temperature rating, but the flashover temperature well exceeds the protective rating of that equipment, and that's how firefighters perish in fires.
Do you mind if I ask one more question, since no one else has?
Your hand is raised. Go right ahead.
I just want to be, I mean, I, we've, we've talked about this, and I've heard some of this, but I think it's really important that I'm, I haven't forgotten some of your answers, I just kind of want those answers on the record, too. So, the fire department, and you touched on this, does something kind of like the hospitals do for triage, right? Like, you know, this person really needs to get in, but you're moving people around as you're responding to different, different calls within the city. So, you know, if you don't have enough people to move around, if you don't, if you're not fully staffed, I mean, that, that's reducing or increasing the call time, because, I mean, really, what we're talking about here is, you know, I came out of the meeting the other day and went, "Response time, response time, response time." And that's really kind, you know, what we're talking about, but I, I'm just hoping you'll go into kind of how you guys triage, just in a little bit more depth.
Sure. I'm going to use a couple of recent examples, because I think they're kind of fresh in people's minds, of events we just had recently, the Fourth Street explosion, and the University of Housing fire that we had. Both those events reached the extent where we had to utilize all of our resources available in the city. So all five stations, their engine companies and the aerial apparatus resource that we have out of Station, I think we pulled Station 4 over for that, but that left no resources available to cover the next call within the city, both those events. We had to rely on cooperators across the valley, the Missoula Rural Fire Department, to pick up the calls that we had that started coming in after those events. We had simultaneous calls, traffic accidents during the Fourth Street explosion, we had a weather event moving in, we had several vehicle accidents. Vehicle accidents in and of themselves require a two-engine response, okay, so there's extrication or manpower to move patients around, or disentangle folks. It takes a while to spool up calling crews to staff our reserve apparatus, so a basic medical call would tie up one engine with three firefighters, but it's the larger events that we are exhibiting and seeing more frequently in the city that require the manpower and the additional engines. So, a, for example, a car accident north of the river would tie up Engine 4 and 1, and there'd be a giant hole north of the river. We'd have to backfill any subsequent calls from Stations 2, 3, or 5, south of the river, and it just compounds the call leaving those additional holes from those vacant districts.
Can, can you, yeah, we have two other councils? Okay, think on that for a second, maybe it'll get answered, and the, and the two others that, I know, it's lots of questions to answer, for sure. All right, Counselor Anderson?
Okay, so I'm going to try to be telepathic with Councilwoman Cheryl. I appreciate all the presentation. One of the things I know that we talked a little bit more about on Wednesday, but didn't really cover tonight, which I think is really an important element, is the component of the mobile support team and the services that that provides to our community, and it is housed within the fire department, and how this would actually help create some dedicated funding. Could you talk a little bit about how we've been able to spin that up, what the funding situation we have had, and now that it no longer exists, which is why they're a component of this levy as well?
Absolutely. So, the mobile support team has been a dynamic and exciting component to our resources and our available response. They have eliminated a large time component with our Big Red Truck folks on calls that require a behavioral response that isn't necessarily a medical response or a police matter. They respond as a support resource for fire and police, and then if the situation doesn't warrant any protective presence from PD, they're there to render aid and help appropriately to the situation, and free up those resources to respond in other means and manners. But that unit has been funded strictly through grant funding and ARPA resources. ARPA is no longer available, we've utilized those, we still have some grant funding available to us, and also House Bill 872, which passed, which allows for potential billing of that resource with Medicaid, Medicare dollars, so we don't have dollars available to keep them on the streets. We don't have a solid revenue.
Yeah, a dedicated line I am funding, and I'm going to take a little bit of liberty, since the mayor was up and about. I think that it's also important to highlight that 30 calls a day that you highlighted do not actually include any of the mobile support team calls. So the, you know, that's in addition to what the calls you guys are going on, on an average day, and I mean, I know that you don't think 30 calls a day is a lot, but there's only 24 hours in a day, so that means, you know, and I have a feeling that they aren't nicely spaced out evenly throughout the day and night, that they, as you said, the terminology you use is call collision, which means simultaneous calls, and if, I think what I heard you say is that we're at the point where there are situations where all available, you know, personnel and trucks are spoken for, and so, you know, there is a situation that could happen where a major call comes in, and you're scrambling to call people in off-duty, or calling in Missoula Rural, which you have a mutual aid agreement, and that will only lengthen the time that it will take for people to, you know, show up to provide life-saving or structure-saving services. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Anderson, thank you. I thought I saw Counselor Farmer, did you have a question?
Stacy asked it, so I'm good.
Okay, okay, great. All right, looking around the room, I think that's all questions from counselors in the room, all right? And any online, any questions from counselors online? All right, not seeing any then. So, that brings us to our main motion. Counselor Anderson, would you go ahead and make that motion, please?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, get to that part. Passed all of the other motions we've made this evening. Okay, so, I am proud to make the recommended motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Missoula, Montana submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Missoula for an election on June 4th, 2024, and asked the question whether the City of Missoula shall be authorized to exceed a statutory mill provided in Section 15-10-420 of Montana Code annotated by permanently levying up to 34 mills per year, which is approximately $7 million annually, for the purposes of providing additional funding and financing for the fire and emergency services to not, to include apparatus, vehicles, equipment, operations, personnel, facilities, and training. And when appropriate, I would like to speak to the motion. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Great, okay, so a motion is on the floor, and again, we are in a new council format, but we have a pretty significant item here, and I would go ahead and invite public comment on this item before there is council comments. Is there any public comment this evening?
Yep.
Come on up.
Jeffrey Oswald, Mount Avenue. So I have a job, and I take care of a developmentally disabled adult with behavioral issues, and so what I do is I And so, what I do is I, I bring him on outings. I'm a support staff for activities. Today, we went to the fire station. We went to two fire stations today. We went to one on yesterday, too. He's very interested in the fire station. And when we were getting a tour, the young man was super friendly and very, very engaging, mentioned something to the fact that some of the engines that they don't, aren't able to use at this point. And he didn't want to, he, he kind of balked at, he didn't really want to answer why, the question why that came up, but I kind of filled it in because I knew it was a matter of funding. And he said, they just don't have enough people to run the engines that they have. Now, questions, there were questions that the chief here is answering about response time in fire. And I, I don't know if you ever built a fire, but once it gets going, it grows exponentially. So, say it's this big now, in two minutes, it's going to grow in all directions. And so, like, if it's already involved when, when the call is made, that two minutes could be the difference between part of a room being on fire and the entire room being engulfed. And that's a big deal for the safety of the fire department and the safety for, of the people's house it is and the neighbors and everything. So, you know, like, I, I don't know about how big of a, this is going to be voted on by the public. And I expect this is something like, probably like the library or something, that I think the people who care about their community are going to be very strongly in favor of this. Where there are some things that, that money is spent on that is more debatable, but there is no occupation in a community that is more heroic and dedicated to the community than the fire department. There isn't nobody. And if your house is burning down, you'd be glad that they had enough people to put it out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Oswald. Are there others in the audience that wish to make public comment? Come on up.
Robert Dunlop, Twenty-three Sixteen West Kent Avenue. D U N L O P.
Thank you.
I have nothing to add or subtract or disagree with what the fire chief has presented. I'm very grateful to the police force and for the fire department and the local government academy of last year for exposing me to some of the situations that exist. But what I would like the council to think about in the future is annexation and the cost of annexation. The fire chief, his, his area to cover has expanded. It seems like every time you annex a piece of property, the taxes that it generates does not come close to the cost of bringing them into the city. So, I'm just saying, think about it. Maybe it's time we let the people across the street think about their fire department, their police protection, their water problems, their sewer problems, and quit annexing. Just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dunlop. Are there others in the audience that wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right, not seeing any online, then we'll go ahead and close public comment on this agenda item and bring it back to council comments. And I will start with Councillor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor. And I, you know, obviously am in support of this and will be working hard with folks to get the word out about this levy and the importance that its passage means to the community. I think that, you know, Chief Hughes said it best when he said, response time save lives. And that is an undeniable fact, and we are at the point now where we are over the national average. And so, that, and when your, you know, loved one is having a medical crisis or your, you know, memories and belongings and your most, you know, your biggest asset is on fire, you want people to get there as, as quickly as possible. And I think the other thing that, you know, stood out for me in the presentation today was not only do we think about ourselves and our loved ones and our family members, but they're actually, you know, the ability to make sure that every firefighter goes home to their family safely at the end of their shift is a really important component. And by not having folks getting there in a timely manner, the, you know, situation can get out of control. And so, that is another really important aspect, I think, to this overall levy. I think that all of us around here recognize that this is not an ideal situation. The police and fire department make up over the majority of the general fund budget. And it's true, growth in Montana does not pay for itself. But I really think it's important to highlight that this is not a Missoula problem only. Calispel is actually out asking for a levy for their, from their voters this month. Helena just voted to put it on the ballot also this year. I know that Bozeman's looking at it. Great Falls asked their voters for a much larger levy for a much smaller community last fall. Mile City asked for a levy. So, it, this is not a Missoula problem. This is something that's happening all across Montana, and I think that really, I think, shows that our overall, how we fund basic government city operations such as the fire and police department is not keeping up with the pace. And more and more demand is being put on us at the local level, and we are very limited in the ability to fund things. And so, we have no other choice but to ask the voters to pass this. And I hope that they answer the call and recognize that, you know, for less than a dollar a day, we will have the necessary services to make sure that we live in a safe community. And if you're the one who is calling nine-one-one and you get there, someone gets there in less than six minutes, such as the national average, thank those folks around you and your community who supported the levy to make sure that that happens for you in your time of need. So, happy to support this. We'll be talking a lot about it in the coming months between now and June Fourth. But just thank you to Chief Hughes, Assistant Chief Keating, to those members of the fire department who are here in support today. And, you know, just thank you for everything that you do for our community, and I hope our community steps up and, and supports you in this time.
Thank you, Councillor Anderson. And we will move to Councillor Jones.
Um, I would echo what Councillor Anderson said in her comments. I've been hearing this information for months now, and I wish we had better tools and forms of revenue to fund our basic services, but it's hard. And we've worked on, I've been doing, this will be my ninth budget this summer. It gets harder every summer until we have some significant tax reform in this state. So, here we are, we have to use the tools that are in front of us. The thing I wanted to say was, over the years, I just want you to note that the fire department leadership has been an excellent advocate for their needs and how they can best serve this community. They have been vocal, the different fire chiefs and Chief Hughes, they have been articulate and vocal and great communicators in terms of what is needed. We haven't had the tools to meet that, which I apologize for, but this is a tool we can use, is putting this on the levy and asking the community to support the fire department because I do think public safety is one of the highest priorities for our local government. We have good departments, and to keep those departments good with good morale, good people, livable wages, not working so much overtime that they get burned out for both police and fire. They have to be sufficiently staffed and paid sufficiently, and that's, that's significant. So, this is our, this is our tool that we have, and I hope the community heats that. And thank you, Chief Hughes, and to the labor union for all of your work on this over the months. It's above and beyond, that's what they call it, service. It's a very relative term, can mean a lot of extra hours. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. We'll move to the next folks in line, which is Councillor Campbell. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, I'm going to be in support of this motion. I've been part of the emergency services system here in Missoula for twenty-three years. These folks, these men and women in the fire department need this, they have needed this for quite some time. And, you know, in a lot of ways, Madam Mayor, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated because I know that this isn't a revelation. This is something that's come down, you know, from your predecessors forward, from other fiscal years in the past, the need to improve emergency services within the fire department facilities for manpower. And, you know, here we are, we've arrived at this point today, and, you know, I can't help but wonder, you know, going back, you know, trying to address our budgets, you know, in a priority-based fashion, which I think we need to do going forward. Again, it's going to come to some tough conversations going forward with our budget, but having a, you know, a priority-based budget system to, we look at, address and make sure we're addressing emergency services and those needs, infrastructure, what have you. And I, I think we've gotten off track to a large degree here in recent years with pet projects, with the latest shiny object to come down, with other wants that are within the budget and not addressing the needs. And, you know, here we are today with this levy request because we've neglected the budget. And, you know, these things have come up from time to time in previous year budgets, there are these wants, there are these proverbial drops in the bucket, if you will. You know, over years and years and years, I, I can't help but wonder, you know, if it had been addressed from the onset, you know, whether, you know, we would be at this point today, quite frankly, or to what degree we would be at this point. I think if we had, you know, those drops, that fifty-gallon, you know, bucket of water to give you at this point, proverbially, you know, no pun intended, water, but for your budget needs, that we wouldn't be in this position today. So, a lot of frustration, but this is the right course to take. I'm fully in support of this motion and, you know, I hope the community, I'm going to work hard to make sure the community gets behind this levy going forward and that we see success with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. Councillor Vasika.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of briefly go over the things that I mentioned on Wednesday. I have been challenged to find seven million dollars in the budget annually to fund this. And I take, I take it up on the challenge, but I don't understand why it has to be just me to find that, to fund the fundamental things to have a government work. The things that make a government work are police, fire, and infrastructure. Everything else is arbitrary until we can actually have the fundamental mechanisms to make a community work. And it is insane that since two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-two, we've only had eighty firefighters on staff, and the increase of call volume versus staffing has increased exponentially. That is insane, that that is not a priority of ours. So, I challenge me and all of my councillors and the mayor and all of staff to make sure that we try to make this a priority. And I understand that it is a hard thing to do, but we should be really looking to how we can actually do this with what property tax dollars are going to and what the public thinks that their property tax dollars are going to. And I'm sorry, this is just a hot topic for me, and I will be in support of this motion. I'm very sad that it has to go to a voted levy, but I do hope that our, all of our neighbors do, are in support of this because this is an absolutely needed function of our government, and we do need the firefighters to be properly staffed. So, I do hope that our voters do vote yes on this. I'm just very frustrated about how it is coming to fruition.
Thank you, Councillor Vasika. Councillor Farmer?
Yeah, thanks, Chief Hughes. Thanks for all your presentations and answering all our questions and explaining ISO ratings to us and really helping us understand this. I think for me, I'm obviously very much in support of this, and I think the take-home to me is, as much as I like to joke that Cs get degrees, with your fire department, that's really not the rating that you want to have. Even a D rating is pretty, pretty dangerous. And so, I think for me, I hope that the community really does take home that, that if, if we don't pay for this now through this large hefty ask that we're asking for, it, it is going to be a payment at some point, and there is going to be a cost to you through your home insurance. And so, I hope that everyone kind of really looks at that closely and that the voters do support this because I think that it's, it's very much needed. And like we heard from Mr. Drobek, that two thousand twelve was a very different time. We heard that the iPhone was one years old and that T-Swift was worth twenty thousand dollars. And two thousand twelve was a different community, a very different community. And I hope that we really do look for ways to be more efficient with our budget dollars, but this is the situation that we're in right now. And so, I'm very much in support of this, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Councillor Farmer. Councillor Nugent?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Davis. I am firmly in support of this as, as we discussed at the committee meeting. I recognize the kind of conversation both in this room and, and around the community on priorities and, and taxes and I am looking forward to the budget process and, and some of the ideas that Mayor Davis has around bringing some, some more transparency to that. The reality, though, is that there is no magic item or items in the budget that we can cut down that won't be immensely noticeable in other areas, primarily other parts of public safety, that would somehow offset not having this need. And a lot of people up around this, the horseshoe up here have talked about growth not paying for itself. And I would just say that it's so much more complicated than that because the tax system expects growth to pay for itself and pay for the shortcomings of the way local governments are, are budgeted for. Certainly, there are, there are lessons we can learn and we can all sit here and we can, we can look back with hindsight, especially because a lot of us weren't here for a lot of the years referenced since we last really made a major investment in the fire department. And we can say things like, moving forward, we are, looking back, we should have hired more at a, at a pace that allowed us to kind of absorb all of this. And that's fine. And I think that we can also agree that moving forward, a lot of us sitting up here will look at that and look at kind of that staffing and hiring in the budget processes moving forward, but this is where we're at right now. And I think that my, my colleague, Ms. Farmer, mentioned it, that this will be a cost to the community no matter what happens. And it's one that I think it's not worth taking a chance on. There are no simple solutions. But I will say this again, if, if it was as easy as saying, communities should prioritize fire and other public safety more, then we would not have the majority of large and even some small communities in this state going to voters and asking for this solution right now. It is not as simple as just saying, oh, we could have done things different. The tax system's broken. Yes, we can do things better on our end, but we also need the state to pick up their end and try and solve that. In the meantime, this is the tool we have, and myself and many of my colleagues up here are asking the community to show the support and belief in the fire department, to spend this wisely and to do good for Missoula.
Thank you for your comments, Councillor Nugent. And I believe that brings us to conclusion for all councillor comments. Just looking around to see if anybody wishes to make any others. All right? All right then. So, that then brings us to vote, and I believe that we can do a voice vote on this. Ms. Tremble, if you're good with that?
Absolutely. All right, a voice vote to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana, to submitting to the qualified electors of the city on the election of June Fourth, question of whether the city shall be authorized to exceed the statutory mill levy provided for in Section Fifteen Ten Four Twenty by permanently levying up to thirty-four mills per year, currently raising approximately seven million dollars annually for the purposes of providing additional funding or financing for fire and emergency services, including apparatus, vehicles, equipment, operations, personnel, facilities, and training. By acclamation, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed?
And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. And Chief Hughes, thank you, and all members of the department here, and of course, not here this evening. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes Agenda Item 9. And this brings us then to the informative part of our agenda. We will start with public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment on non-agenda items. We invite folks to the podium, please identify your, your name, please spell your last name, identify what part of town you live in, it just helps us to understand what ward you're in. If you're representing an organization, we'd encourage you just to let us know who that is. And again, we keep our public comments to around three minutes. I'll hold up a card if you're getting close to that, just to help you out. All right, come on up.
All right. Thank you. I apologize, I'll be reading from my phone. My name is Chris Chitty, I, C-H-I-T-T-Y. I live in Franklin de Fort, which is now in Ward 3. Thank you, Madam Mayor, city councilors. Myself and many others in the room here today would like to introduce ourselves to you as a new organization by the name of Pro Housing Missoula. We're a group of folks that have meeting, that have been meeting for almost two years for the purpose of engaging with the once-in-a-generation opportunity that we have in the form of the Our Missoula Growth Policy and Development Code Rewrite. The first product of this two-year collaboration is a letter that we have written to the mayor and city council, which describes a vision for the code reform that we believe will result in a more equitable, affordable, and resilient Missoula. As all of you have clearly articulated, and as is plain, Missoula is suffering a crisis-level housing shortage, arguably the most serious in our city's history. And we very much appreciate all that you and your predecessors have done to grapple with this situation. The creation and funding of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, supporting the development of new subsidized housing projects, including Vilagio, Trinity, and now the Rivera Project, as well as community land trust homeownership projects, have been immensely valuable to our community. With respect for and acknowledgement of all the work that has already been done, we make the following two requests of Missoula City Leadership, Staff, and Consultants. We ask, one, that you commit to project completion by the established deadline of January of 2025. And, two, we want you to ensure that Missoula's zoning code is ambitious enough to meet the challenge at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chitty. Come on up.
Hello, Hannah Kosel, K-O-S-E-L, tenant in Ward 1. As Pro Housing Missoula, we understand that adopting these reforms and achieving a more diverse and abundant supply of housing is a major undertaking. But it is clear that this is by far the most important issue for Missoulians throughout our community. If we do not act with urgency, we will see more young adults forced to abandon a hometown they love, more businesses struggle to find workers, and more neighbors struggling to pay, or struggle while paying an outrageous portion of their income for the most basic need of all, a decent home. We want to act boldly now to reap the benefits out of this once-in-a-generation opportunity to proactively build housing and related infrastructure that will create truly livable, sustainable, and connected neighborhoods across all of Missoula. Our vision for code reform is supported by a large and diverse coalition of organizations, businesses, and individuals deeply concerned about the affordability and accessibility of housing in Missoula, housing for people of all ages, backgrounds, and incomes. Currently, this includes Ford Montana, North Missoula Community Development Corporation, Families for a Livable Climate, Hone Architects and Builders, Montana Women Vote, Colo Architecture, Montana Youth Action Board, Upslope Group, Missoula Tenants Union, Sightline Institute, Missoula Real Estate Meetup, Missoula Institute of Sustainable Transportation, and University of Montana Bear Necessities, with more organizations signing on weekly. We will be sending you all our detailed vision tomorrow morning and following up with requests to meet with you all individually to continue this conversation. We look forward to working with you all in this essential moment and ensure that our beloved city is one that is affordable, accessible, and livable for all for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosel. Others this evening wish to make a public comment on items not on the agenda. Any in the room? Looking around, any in the room? Is there anybody online that wishes to make public comment on items not on the agenda? All right. I'm not seeing any. Well, thank you very much. And that then concludes our public comment on non-agenda items. We'll then move to communications from the mayor, and then we'll move on to council comments. Big night tonight, folks. Lots going on in Missoula, and I just want to thank you. Thank you for taking big steps and congratulate everybody for moving things forward. Thanks to the members of the public that are here tonight in introducing the Pro Housing Group, eager to take a look at your letter, your finalized letter, and we'll have a chance to work together. That was, that leads me, really, well, to my first, my first comment is, while I understand that there is definitely, I think, a lot to discuss when it comes to our evolving understanding of equity and diversity work, passing the Jedi Resolution, I know, is, is very memorable and significant for us as a community. So I'm looking forward to see where that takes us. The workforce housing piece is something that we had talked about a bit in committee, but I thank you very much for moving that forward. It's a substantial amount of work for years, as many of you spoke to. The staff have been dedicated for years, as have many council members and then new folks that have joined council. Thank you for, for supporting this, even when that might have stretched your comfort level. And I'm looking forward to reporting back on the progress of that project. When we have the opportunity to create such a substantial community land trust, where we have had a model in our community guaranteeing affordable homeownership opportunities, I'm really hopeful that this will guarantee that we have folks earning their wages in our community that will be able to stay here. And that includes folks that work for the city of Missoula as well, work for the county of Missoula, work all across our community in different professions. Tomorrow, from noon until 4:00 PM, the city council will be holding its second urban camping work group, and I want to, oh, Wednesday, sorry, that's, yes, that's Wednesday, sorry. Just seeing if you're awake. Sorry. Thanks. Thanks. Not on your calendar for tomorrow? That's on Wednesday, I will see you there. Some, some members of council can't make it. I just wanted to also speak to this for a moment, just as a moment of clarity, that in November, when there was a ordinance put forward to clarify Missoula's current camping ordinance, the, we chose to wait on that, to pause that, and really for an opportunity like this, for the full city council to have a working group opportunity. Many of you had requested a chance to have a conversation and learn about the opportunities that may be in front of us and, and the challenges that we face as a community with restricted resources to be able to address a very challenging situation. So it's, all 12 of you have committed to this work, and I appreciate that, alongside the 11 diverse community members that represent a diverse set of interests in the community. So looking forward to our next work group session on Wednesday. And then thanks again, you know, the last thing that I would, I would just want to say that when we were talking about response time saves lives, my father-in-law was saved because of response time. First of all, so he had a heart attack a week after our, our wedding in the Finn and Porter Hotel, in the restaurant. And fortunately, my sister-in-law had just upped her CPR, so we kept him alive for about the two minutes it took to have Station One respond. And in that time, we, we did have quick response. And we did have first responders get there, and he had a, our, he, he was not a, a large man, he was actually a thin man, but his heart stopped immediately. So he was pretty much probably already dead when they showed up. And they did save, they brought him back to life. And within about four or five minutes, he was at St. Pat's Hospital. And he lived for about another 13 years after that. And it's a really personal story. I was telling the story the other night, and a member of that response unit actually was there, and this was about 18 years ago now, which was pretty incredible. And he said, you know, there was somebody with us that, that day that was the first life they saved, and you always remember the first life you save. And so that's pretty special for me and something I just wanted to share. And I hope that we can continue to hold up the need in our community for public safety for everybody, and as we move forward with the voters supporting this, this levy in June. All right, I will conclude my comments there. And I will go ahead and start over to my left here with Councilor Jordan, see if you have any council comments this evening.
Thank you, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Thanks so much. And that was actually Captain Joel Gertag, who saved your father-in-law, so, who's, he is helping lead the effort to get the word out on the levy. And there will be information for the public available on Engage Missoula, as well as the fire department's social media, the fire union's social media. Please reach out to myself, or Mr. Nugent, or any of us, if you are a member of the public who wants to know how you can get involved and help make sure that the voters of Missoula know how important this is, and encourage them to vote for it. And just thank you all to my colleagues for the unanimous vote and your continued support of public safety. And I just, it's a really important ask, and I look forward to engaging with members of the community to talk more about why it is that we are in this position and the benefits that it will have all of our community, provide all of our community, even if we don't, you know, have that personal story like the mayor does. If, you know, you have a conversation amongst your friends, you will immediately, you will find someone who has that personal story, who has someone in their life that has been saved because of the heroism and quick response of our first responders. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll pass.
Okay. Great. Councilor Nugent?
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Sherrill? Okay. Same? All right. Councilor Farmer?
I'll also pass.
Okay.
I will talk. So I just want to say that the PROST, which is the Parks Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Master Plan, is in process. Every 10 years, the Parks Department does this to take the temperature of what the community wants to see in their parks. This is a big, massive planning effort. So tomorrow at 5:30 at the Public Library, there is a session to gather in public input, so I encourage everyone to go. And I also encourage you to request more dog parks, because that's what I really want, but just putting that out there. Anyway, it's great, the more people that engage in it, the more information we'll have, and our parks are constantly evolving because Missoula loves their parks to death. So let's give some good information to the Parks Department so that they can make good decisions as they figure out the way forward.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Nelson?
I'm also going to pass, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Savage?
Quickly, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone's support on the Rivera Development. It's really great to be able to get all of those things voted on and done and get the project moving. And I also just wanted to say thank you to the Pro Housing Missoula Group for coming tonight. I had a lot of thoughtful conversations with many of you last week, and I too am looking forward to your finalized letter and looking forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving to councilors online, Councilor Becerra, do you have any comment this evening?
I will pass, thank you.
Okay, you bet. And Councilor Vasika?
So, well, Councilor Gwen Jones, I will talk. I just wanted to also thank Gwen for mentioning the PROST, because that is a very informational, very much appreciated informational survey. And so I really want as many people to participate that as possible. And just like Mayor Davis said, I do have a personal story regarding the fire department. When my kiddo was less than a year old, one of my hairs was wrapped around his little toes and was about to cut his toe off. It was called a hair tourniquet. So apparently, that's a thing. And so I called 911 because I was scared and alone, because my husband was at work. And they came and mitigated the situation very quickly and saved my baby boy's toes. So the, the fire department is a very impressive unit of people. So I really hope that they will continue to be funded throughout the, throughout the next longevity of the years. I also wanted to remind folks that on the 10th is daylight savings time, so it's spring forward, fall back. So on the 10th, it is spring forward. And I also want to remind folks, I think somebody else mentioned this earlier, that the U.S. Postal Service Town Hall is at 6:00 PM at the Doubletree Hotel. And let them all know how, what your feelings are about the postal service, staying in Missoula or moving to Spokane. That's an apt time to tell them about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Vasika. Okay, well, that brings us to the end of council comments and to the end of our agenda. So I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:49 PM. Thank you, everybody.